Order, um, regular meeting to let April 28th, 2022. Um, is Stan that salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please. Is somebody gonna do roll call?
Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Planning Board has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of the meeting by one prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the date, uh, time, location, and agenda of this meeting; two, mailing such announcement to the Home News Tribune; and three, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk. Um, Ms. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Lenning?
Here.
Mr. Mimakis? Mr. De Palma?
Here.
Mr. Lauer?
Here.
Mr. Rena?
Here.
Mr. Pink? Mr. Petty?
Here.
Um, and Ms. Missella and Chairman Marucci, I know, are unavailable tonight. Um, Mr. Sordillo?
Here.
Ms. Sawant?
Ms. Shapiro?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Labalo? Mr. Darji? And Mr. Prost, um, and myself, Ms. C., present. Thank you.
Okay, we have the minutes of March 24th, 2022, meeting. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll move it. Second.
Mr. De Palma, second, and Mr. Lauer.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis? Oh, um.
Yes.
My apologies. Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink? Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Uh, Chairwoman Cannon?
Here, yes. Okay, before we start, um, I just want, if there's anyone here for Bright Point Housing, uh, that application is being adjourned or continued? Do we know, have a date when it's continued to?
We don't have a date yet. Uh, I did let the attorney know that I will reach out to her tomorrow morning with an extension form, uh, and a date because, uh, we were booked until June, so potentially it's gonna be July, and they need time to revise, uh, their, uh, in application as well. So, I will reach out to them and notify the board.
And so, Madam Chair, that means they would be re-noticing. We'll, we'll let.
Yes, I have informed her that she would have to re-notice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, everybody will be, who's in, uh, is in that area, whatever, will be re-noticed, uh, when the meeting will be, or the application will be heard. Okay, we have presentations. The first was the amendment to the 2017 master plan reexamination, and, uh, our planner is going to fill it in.
Good evening, board members. Um, yeah, we have three presentations. Uh, in fact, all three of them are public hearings. Uh, I'll start, two are public hearings, sorry. Uh, the, uh, that is correct. The first two are public hearings, the second one is a consistency review. Um, I'll start with the master plan reexamination. I was here in front of the board a month ago, and I had made a presentation of the potential changes uh, within the master plan reexamination. Actually, the redevelopment agency has been working on a couple of projects, and also during the last six months, we have noticed that there are some, um, issues with our older general development plans. We have two of them, uh, that were approved, Woodhaven and Oaks One, and, um, there, we have had some challenges with the bulk standards because the planning board had granted a variance on the building coverage, but then the impervious coverage is less than the building coverage, uh, due to which, uh, none of these homeowners are able to put a swimming pool or any accessory structure in their backyard. It triggers a variance, and, uh, it's a problem, so we have to re-evaluate those areas. Um, there are other underutilized parcels within, uh, the township that may qualify for an area designation based on local housing redevelopment law. So, this master plan recommendation includes all, uh, projects or all zoning, rezoning, redevelopment projects that we plan to undertake during the coming here. So, most of the edits to the master plan amendment, one, their formatting, because, uh, I was using an old format written by the former planner, which was a PDF, very challenging to format, so I just got the whole thing reformatted so that moving forward, it's easy when I start, uh, making those updates. So, mostly their formatting errors, uh, cha-changes, and then you'll notice the meat of it is in the re-recommendations section where, um, the, the amendments that I just presented in front of you are included. In the township, we have two former landfills, and those qualify for, um, and you will hear it in my next, uh, presentation, but those qualify for, potentially qualify for redevelopment and are ripe for development, so, uh, those are included as part of the recommendations as well. So, that's the master plan amendment for you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Anybody from the board? Okay, um, anybody from the public have any questions or input? All right, seeing no hands. Did you have anything else with this particular thing, Vina?
No, I have nothing further on the master plan reexamination.
Madam Chair, we, we do have a resolution that will, um, um, adopt the, the master plan amendment as presented. Uh, we can either do that now, or we can hold it off to resolutions later on in the meeting.
Why don't we do it now, so we don't forget?
Absolutely.
Okay, is there a motion to, uh, the amendment to the 2017 master plan reexamination?
I'll move it, a second.
Okay, didn't even hear who moved it. Mr. Mimakis? And seconded by Mr. Lauer, or the other way around.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink? Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Okay, then we have the global landfill area need of investigation study.
That is correct. So, um, last year, around June of 2020, not, 2021, the council passed a resolution authorizing the planning board to undertake an area investigation study for, uh, the global landfill site. The study area includes six parcels, two of which are the global landfill. There are four other properties that are close to the landfill that are vacant, that are underutilized, and, um, uh, so they are eligible for the, uh, area investigation study. And tonight, I'm here, uh, I'm sure you have received, um, digitally a copy of the area investigation study. The study was also posted on the township's website. Based on, uh, the redevelopment law, there were two notices published in the Homes, Home News Tribune, one on April 11th, and the second one on April 18th, um, announcing, uh, that the planning board will be conducting a hearing on the global landfill site. So, under the statutory criteria instituted by the state of New Jersey and the Old Bridge Council Resolution memorialized on June 22nd, 2021, the Township Council authorized the planning board to conduct this study. This report that is in front of you is consistent with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Superfund Program, which calls for cleaning up of contaminated sites with, throughout the nation. Uh, the investigation was prompted by existence of underutilized, undeveloped, vacant parcels and former landfill sites. The former landfill has gone through cleanup remediation and capping process, and I'll get into, in, uh, detail, which was under the supervision of EPA and NJDEP. Um, this plan, if, uh, this study, if adopted, would be a non-condemnation plan, which means the township will not exercise the power of eminent domain. The entire area is located close to the municipal boundary of Old Bridge and Seville, close to Ernston Road, and, uh, next to, to the east of London Terrace Apartments and New Amsterdam. On the screen, what you have is the map of the study area, and you will notice, two of the lots are actually slivers. They are more meant to provide access to the landfill because, uh, the entire landfill site is landlocked, and only during the remediation process, the Superior Court of Jersey required, uh, the neighboring property owner to provide access, and that's when Global Access Road was created. But all parcels, there are six parcels within the study area, all of which are currently, uh, vacant. So, with the global landfill site, global landfill actually operated between 1968 and 1984. And in that period, actually, there was a lot of, um, dumping of, uh, drums of paint, paint thinners, and various solvents that were buried. And there was an incident close to 1984 when the E, uh, DEP seized the operation. They required global landfill to seize the operation. So, the landfill has not been in operation since 1984. It was only around, uh, 2010 that the remediation process truly began. And by, um, 2012, the landfill was capped. The five-year first review after the capping process took place in 2015, the next one took in 2020. But EPA's Superfund Program actually encourages all municipalities within the nation to undertake area investigation studies and repurpose, revitalize these remediated, uh, sites, and that's exactly what we are doing. So, uh, the study is consistent with the Superfund Program. Um, all the properties within, uh, the study area lie within the ER, Environmental Recreation Zone of the township. Uh, also, this area lies within the Metropolitan Planning Area, PA 1, where infill development, redevelopment is highly encouraged. The area is close to Highway Nine, can be accessed. The area is close to Highway Nine, can be accessed through the Global Access Road at the current, uh, in the current conditions. Now, based on the redevelopment law, there are eight criterias to which you can apply to the sites to designate or decide whether the area meets the area investigation criteria or area need of redevelopment criteria. In this case, criteria, see, I won't go through all the criterias. I'll, I'll only talk about the ones that really apply to the sites. So, here's the two sites, uh, which are the slivers, which I talked about before. Um, these two sites meet criteria C and criteria E. Criteria C deals with, um, vacant, underutilized, undeveloped parcels that have remained so for more than ten years. And these two sites clearly have been undeveloped for more than, uh, ten years. Also, all six sites within the redevelopment area have, uh, tax delinquencies. And when you have tight, tax delinquencies, there are multiple, uh, title owners, and so, uh, it meets criteria E, which leads to underutilized, uh, properties. So, these two properties meet. So, Site One and Site Two meet criteria C and criteria E. Section three of the, uh, criterias, which was added later, actually, in the law, says that if the property is sandwiched between two parcels that meet the criteria, and this property doesn't meet any of the criteria, even then, the inclusion of this property is quite essential to the redevelopment of the entire area. And these two properties are essential to the redevelopment of the entire area, and so, section three applies to, uh, these properties as well. The next two sites are actually the landfill sites. So, again, criteria C, criteria E, and the section three apply to these two sites. The only additional criteria that applies to this site, which is different, is criteria D because of the landfill, the former landfill being on these two sites. So, it meets criteria D because of the deleterious land use on these parcels. The next two sites are privately owned. They are vacant, they have remained so for many years. In fact, it's very hard to even get in touch of the owners. We are still trying to find out who the owners are. We did notice the owners, and the notices came back. Uh, so, um, we really don't know who owns it, but it has tax delinquencies for many, many years, and has remained vacant. So, criteria C, E, and the section three also applies to these two sites. This is a conclusion seat, a table to show you that all six parcels meet cri-criteria C, E, and section three, and then the two global landfill sites meet criteria D. And for the reasons set forth in the, in this report, the study area, in my opinion, qualifies for an area in need of redevelopment. And should the board agree with this presentation, agree with the report and the subsequent analysis, then the board may make a recommendation to the Township Council to designate this area as an area in need of redevelopment. I'll take any questions.
Um, so, the process is that we would be, take the first step, and then it would, if we okay this. and then it would, if we okay this, then it would go back to council. Does it come, do they decide then what to do with the property?
So, what happens in the process is, once the planning board passes a resolution recommending the council to designate this area, at the next meeting, the council will take action to designate an area need of redevelopment. Subsequently, I will start working on a redevelopment plan. And because this is a landfill site, and there is cleanup and remediation involved in it, there is limited things that you can do on such sites. EPA has guidelines on how Superfund Sites or how contaminated sites can be redeveloped. So, the plan will be based on the, those guidelines or recommendations. However, once the plan is written, it's an ordinance. So, it goes to the council, but it does come back to the planning board for consistency review with the master plan. And then, it goes back to the council, and then the council acts on it. But you will get to see the redevelopment plan for it.
Okay, but we're only looking in terms of consistency, not in terms of the use itself.
That is correct.
Okay. Does anybody else from the board, or have any comments, Mr. Lauer?
Vina, could you go back to the original drawing, the one with the shows, the access roads? Yes. Currently, they use the access road that's parallel with the township line?
Yes. Do you see the Global Access Road written?
Yes.
That is, so the Superior Court ordered them to create this accessway only for remediation purposes. And there was a dirt road which was used for dumping in the past. However, this road was specifically created. It's like a private driveway that was created so that it doesn't hinder the remediation process. So, when we write the redevelopment plan, we will have to come up with improvements or give access to these areas at the back, depending on what is proposed.
So, the, what I'm going to call the dogleg access, that's never been used. The one that kind of meanders?
The zigzag, the slivers, no.
So, it's just property right now?
It is just property.
Will it be used as access in the future?
Could be, but I know there are environmental constraints. I have als, I'm also looking at the neighboring property, and I know there is a heavy grade change. Nicole can comment more on that. So, we still have to investigate further. But generally, when it comes to improvements, roadways, access, we start looking closely into it once we are in the planning phase of it.
And my last question is, isn't there spillover into Seville from the original landfill?
I don't believe so.
Because it's right on the line there. Well, there might not be, but that's my question.
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the planning board? You have any questions or comments?
I have a comment. So, coming from the public works world, we hear, we go to a lot of continuing education classes, and we hear about old landfills and how this property was stopped use in 1984, almost 40 years ago. Nothing's been done with it. So, to hear about a redevelopment plan and bringing new life into this land, I think is a great opportunity for the township. So, I would definitely support this.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on the board? Okay, welcome to the public. Yes, do you want to come up and give your name and make your comment or have a question?
And all public comments, I think you need to stand on the, I think, for RV, or, you know, purposes, AV purposes, excuse me. We need on the X. Thank you.
My name's Tom Miller, I'm the fire official for that area. The fire official for this area. So, those back roads on that property, we use as fire lanes to get access to the back where you have brush fires. And to the other comment, with being on the border of Seville, I don't believe, it's, the border is literally right there along Global Access Road, because we're down there all the time. But I don't believe it goes into that part of Seville. There was a remediation shed that was back there that they were using. But as far as I know, Vina could probably comment on it, that they're not using it anymore, and it's shut down by the DEP. So, but that's what we use those roads for, is for access for the fire department. And we're back there, I'm back there quite a bit. They're pretty accessible. There's really no issues with them. If there's any issues with them, usually I cite them, clean it up. I usually cite it to London Terrace, and they usually clean it up for us, even though it might not be their property, but, because we need to have access back there in case we have any brush fires, or we had any issues with the dump. But that's all I got.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to comment on this amendment? Okay, we'll close the public portion. And we need to take a vote on this so that...
Yes, Madam Chair, there is a resolution that's been distributed for this. I just would like to note on, that we can move to adopt and adopt this evening, that would recommend, accept the planner's testimony and recommendations that this area, study area, be deemed an area in need of redevelopment, and make that recommendation to the council. However, I just note that on page 2 of the resolution, on the second whereas clause, it should read, "The board did receive," so we'll just delete the word "not." Did receive, did receive, excuse me, did receive comments. I'm going to revise it on the fly right now, and then we'll put it into writing as to the version that gets signed. But the whereas clause will read, "Whereas, comma, the board did receive comments from property owners and the public regarding whether the study area should be recommended as an area in need of non-condemnation redevelopment and rehabilitation," semicolon, "and." So, with that amendment to the resolution that's before you, I would then ask the board to consider the resolution.
Okay. Any more questions or comments from the board? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
Joe, I believe this is for redevelopment only. I don't see rehabilitation. So, maybe we need to remove that word.
And remove the term rehabilitation, yes. You are correct, Vina, thank you. I apologize.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Who's that?
Me. Lenning?
Oh, Mr. Lenning?
Second.
Mr. Lauer? Roll call, please.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. Zapalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yep. Okay, the third is the amendment to the redevelopment plan for the intersection of Jake Brown Road and U.S. Highway 9 and the intersection of White Oak Lane and Jake Brown Road.
Good evening, board again. This is a minor edit to the redevelopment plan. The plan was already in front of the council for first reading. The changes are actually to four sections of the plan. The first two were not part of the council's ordinance. It was only afterwards that I found out those edits. But I'll focus first on the two edits that were presented to the council. It pertains to the floor area ratio of the I-10 zone, which was created through the redevelopment plan. And the next one is the signage section. Overall, the proposed changes are consistent with the master plan. The master plan recommends that this area be investigated for redevelopment. And because the properties within these areas are vacant, we have a redevelopment plan in place to propose newer development. And the applicant, actually, there were three applications in front of the planning board already, so you are familiar with the projects. But there is a minor change in the plan in these two sections. One relates to signage, one relates to floor area. The change with the floor area is consistent with the concept plan that was presented to engineering and planning right at the beginning of the redevelopment process. However, there was a mathematical error on the professional side, on the applicant's side, and we were notified about it only after the plan was adopted. So, we're just trying to fix that. Nothing has changed conceptually. The concept and the acreage, or how much they can build, still remains constant. The next two changes that I added when I'm presenting the plan to you and still have to present it to the council, I did talk to the township attorney, and it was okay to bring it up in front of the planning board, was, there was a parcel included, 42.12, in the original plan. What happened is, and actually, you guys are familiar with this portion, 42.12, lot 42.12, was part of the Oaks 1 development. At that time, when Oaks 1 was developed, the, the developers' agreement required Brunetti's to dedicate a piece of land for the school. And this lot, that therefore, because it was a condition of approval, they came in front of the planning board in 2018. The lot was subdivided to create three lots. So, now, 42.12 does not exist. There is 42.13, 42.14, and 42.15. The subdivision really does not change the redevelopment boundaries. Everything remains the same. But if you try to reference or look up for 42.12, there is no 42.12. The map was filed with the county, so the map was, subdivision map was perfected. And that's the minor change which I added. And I will be presenting the same to the council as well. But this is for just consistency, and I can only say that the amendments that are proposed tonight are consistent with the master plan. The master plan recommends redevelopment for this area, and it is consistent. I'll take any questions.
Okay, so, I'm just a little confused. You're saying that the parcel was originally designated that doesn't exist? Was it designated to be a school, for school property?
So, that property, when Oaks was developed, the GDP, original GDP, they were required to dedicate a portion of their property for the school site.
Right.
There was a condition that if the school decides that they don't need the parcel anymore, it could go back to the Brunetti organization. That's what happened. So, now, the Brunettis own the parcel, but the parcel is split into three individual lots. But all three are currently, Brunetti has the ownership of those three lots. So, that's what is happening.
Okay, but was the school board's decision to?
Yes, that is correct.
Accept that land?
That is correct.
Anybody on the board have any, yes, Mr. Lauer?
Vina, so Brunetti won't be filing a new map, right? Because his, or will he be filing a map in the county for his project? The warehouses that were proposed, will there be a new map filed in the county?
If they go through a subdivision, I believe the planning board already acted on a subdivision for those segment sites. But again, tonight, we're here because the planning board is just conducting the consistency review to see if it's consistent with the master plan or the master plan reexamination report. As a planning board application, the planning board approved the subdivision. Once they go through the compliance phase, once Nicole reviews it, I review it, and the final plans are ready, they would have to go back and perfect the subdivision.
Okay, okay.
Anyone else have questions on the board? Yes, Mr. Rena?
On slide 38, it appears that we're maybe mixing up two buckets in terms of roadway functions. Under the legend, we're calling Route 9 an expressway slash a principal arterial roadway. I believe that those would be two different classifications.
Which page?
Slide 9, slide 37, under the legend. You see the top line? We have expressway slash principal arterial roadway.
That is correct.
Right, so I believe they're two different functions, or at least by definition.
This came straight from the circulation plan that was written in 2009. So, the nomenclature also came from there.
It may be to be scrubbed.
Yep, yep.
And my only specific question that I have, and it's hard to interpret the shading, is when I look at White Oaks Lane, the additional road, it appears to be shaded as a local road, or it could be a collector road, which it shouldn't be. So, can you tell me what your interpretation of that extension is?
Nicole, can you comment?
I just want to go back to Route 9.
Can you pull up slide 37?
I don't believe I have the plan.
It's a color, right? It looks like it is. It looks like it's a local road color, but I can't...
No, can I just go back to the Route 9 question? The principal arterial is an NJDOT classification. When I went back to NJDOT, when we were looking at the recent accidents on Route 9, the expressway comes because of the total volume, because of the lane configuration, and because of the speed on the roadway. Even though it's classified as NJDOT, as a principal artery, it acts as an expressway. And that's, I believe, why Sam Rizzo at the time had classified it as a principal arterial slash expressway. As far as the, can I see?
So, Nicole, the local, the purple he's showing is the White Oak Lane, existing White Oak Lane?
Well, I believe that that's what it is. It's such a close shade, it's hard to determine, but we wouldn't put a collector roadway into that.
I'm just going to speak into the microphone so everybody can hear. The, the shading on the plan that, that was just shown to me is from the 2025 circulation plan in our current circulation element of our master plan. That is, Vina is just shading it based on the existing configuration. She corrects it, though, further slides down when she comes and she says, "Hey, we're going to do this extension of White Oak Lane to..."
Connect it to Jake Brown.
Connecting to Jake Brown Road.
Correct, but it's not to be interpreted as a collector roadway. It is a local road.
No, that's, that's from, straight from the classification of the figure that was included in the circulation element of the master plan.
So, the original 2009 plan?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, then we'll ask for a motion to approve the amendment?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's a resolution that was circulated that if, if the board agrees with, finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the master plan.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Mr. Lauer, move to the second?
I'll second.
Second amendment, Mr. Zapalma. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. Zapalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink? Mr. Petty? Madam Chair?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, under resolutions, we have 03-2020P Regency Centers Acquisition LLC, amended resolution, Phase 1, amend major preliminary and final site plan with C variances. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I can just, just in case any of the board members are curious, there's only one amendment to this applica, to the resolution. That's on page 12, under paragraph 6, where it identifies Building K, the medical offices. It would, as originally drafted, it wasn't clear. It made it sound like the entire building was only going to be 24,000 square feet. But it's actually, that's, the footprint was 24,000 square feet. The entire building size is 72,000 square feet. So, this just clarifies, because it's three stories. So, this just clarifies that. So, it's, and any, I mean, everyone here on the board was here at the application, they know. But when we use these resolutions, sometimes you go look back at them 10, 15, 20 years. So, we wanted to make sure it was clear in there what was being approved.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Mr. Mimakis moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. Zapalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rena?
Yes.
Mr. Pink? Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Okay, the second one is Resolution 46-2021P Aldercrest Development Corp. Do you want to explain that?
Actually, I believe that one is being tabled because we didn't have the minor subdivision, or minor site plan committee meeting this morning. or minor site plan, uh, committee meeting this mo- that had been adjourned. We didn't have the quorum for that. So that res- that resolution, we put off to the next meeting when we actually have the, uh, subcommittee meeting to hear that application.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll table that for.
Okay. Okay, so now Brightpoint has been, um, continued, or is not withdrawn, but continued. And will, uh, there will be new notification. So the next application is fourteen dash two-zero-one-eight-P Sign Brothers LLC, amended preliminary and final site plan.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, professionals, Lawrence Sacks, on behalf of the applicant, Sign Brothers LLC. Uh, we really just have a very brief presentation, uh, on this application this evening. Uh, I really only have one witness, who will be Mr. Anthony Nizzolo, who is the, uh, the owner of the company. I, I do have my engineer here, uh, Mr. Gary Chang, but quite frankly, there really aren't any significant engineering issues associated with this application. Uh, but certainly he's available here if there are any questions. Uh, just as a matter of introduction, uh, this was an application that originally was approved back in twenty-nineteen uh, for Mr. Nizzolo's business. Uh, we're here several years later, at the end of the pandemic, and, uh, with some delays from the county. Uh, but what, all we're seeking tonight, uh, is an amendment to the preliminary and final approval uh, that had been granted back in twenty-nineteen by this board to essentially add, uh, actually to essentially enlarge an accessory building. Uh, this board had approved an accessory building of thirty-two hundred square feet. Uh, we're looking to increase the size of that building to forty-eight hundred square feet. The building was never built, although it was part of the original approval. So that's essentially what our, uh, application is, uh, for this evening. So I do have Mr. Nizzolo here, he'll explain the reason, well, he can briefly describe a little bit about his business and the reason why he needs a little bit larger building, uh, but if he can be sworn in, uh, we'll, we'll proceed.
Yes, uh, you know what, I, I think just in case there might be questions that might come up during, why don't we swear in both witnesses? That way it's just an easy flow of communication, uh, rather than have to swear them in again. So if you both please raise your right hands. Uh, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, would you each just separately state your name and spell your last name for the record?
My name is Anthony Nizzolo, um, N-U-Z-Z-O-L-O.
My name is Gary Chang, C-H-I-A-N-G.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Anthony, let's, uh, let's talk a little bit about your business. Why don't you describe for the board what type of business you're engaged in and, uh, and what you're looking for, and for purposes of this particular application?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I just want to say thank you, um, for allowing me to speak about this project. My dad started, uh, the South Shore Sign Company back in nineteen eighty-three. Uh, we're also known as Sign Brothers. And, um, I've been making signs since I was twelve years old. We were in New York for many years. We had this tremendous opportunity to move to Olbridge. We purchased the building at five-fifty Morristown Road, which I believe was abandoned for about six years. Um, it was an old stable, from what I understand, it was a T-shirt shop. Since we were there, uh, in the very beginning, it started off a little rocky, trying to find our way, how to improve the building and the site, and, uh, we had some momentum, we were doing very well. And then we got hit with the same thing that everybody else got hit with. Pandemic kind of knocked us down. We do a lot of work for retail developers, companies like Westfield, Brookfield, Simon Properties. We also do a lot of work for other companies like Facebook. The key element to our business is we need to create signage for companies, and we need to do it carefully, and we need to do it expeditiously. We cannot do it all in-house, and a lot of times we wind up putting these signs together outside. It doesn't work. So when we planned this building, we saw the opportunity to go a little bigger, which would allow us to, you know, keep up with the times.
All right, so, so essentially then, in, back in twenty-nineteen, the approval was for a thirty-two-hundred-square-foot building. Has not been constructed, and what you'd like to do now is build a forty-eight-hundred-square-foot building? And I'm assuming, Anthony, that this will enable you to obviously store your signs and work on your signs inside, because you can't have them out in the elements, is that correct?
Correct. If you, if you came to my site, you'll see we have supplies outside, it, it shouldn't be like that. They should be in a building, and that's the plan.
Okay, and this, and the structure that's proposed is a pole barn type structure?
Correct.
Okay. All right, now, um, with respect to the auxiliary roadway that leads to where this proposed building will be built, some point in time, you had some discussions with, uh, former fire marshal, Mr. Garrity?
That is correct.
And that was concerning the type of roadway that needed to be installed. And, and by the way, why did you have that discussion with Mr. Ro- with Mr. Garrity? Was there some fire, fire, uh, prevention issues that had to be installed on site?
Yes, so I guess for many years, one of the, uh, uh, wishlist items for the fire department was to have some form of an access road, um, to our property, and also have the ability to install fire hydrants. It had never been done before. As part of the site improvement, um, Mr. Garrity approached me and said, this is what, this is what we want. He said, you should ask some of your neighbors for help, because it's a big expense. Nobody wanted to help. We did it on our own. I worked with Mr. Garrity when he was the fire marshal. We agreed on two fire hydrants and an improvement to the existing main, um, that cuts across Morristown Road. We took on that expense, and we put in the hydrants. Um, but one of the things that we had to do was there's no sense putting in hydrants if you can't access them. So there was an, an old roadway there, and, um, there was a lot of debris, there was trees, and we, uh, we made that happen, so.
All right, and the, the type of material that you put down, uh, at Mr. Garrity's suggestion, I assume, was recycled asphalt pavement?
Correct.
Commonly called RAP?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and that provided a more stabilized base for, obviously, if a fire truck needed to access this auxiliary building, this accessory structure?
That is correct. The, it, it's kind of pointless to put down anything else there, because you, if a rig tried to go down that road and you had bluestone, let's say, it would get stuck.
Okay. Now, one of the, uh, recommendations in the staff report dated April twenty-fifth, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two from, uh, Ms. Suwan, Ms. Shapiro, is that, uh, you provide some type of documentation from the company that put this down, that you're in compliance with the DEP regulations concerning that type of material. You're willing to do that?
That is correct.
All right, and Guitarist Construction, who is, I know, a reputable contractor, is willing to provide that for you?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chairwoman, I don't really have any further questions. Uh, we do have a very brief report from your staff. And I know one of the major comments, I think was on, uh, the engineering comment, uh, was that the applicant should confirm that NJDEP recycled asphalt pavement and asphalt millings, RAP reuse guidance document dated March, uh, March twenty-thirteen is followed appropriately, and we will comply with that. We will get correspondence from the contractor, who's a licensed contractor, and we'll provide that for your staff. So essentially, our proposal this evening, and again, my engineer is here, if you have any questions regarding that, any board members have any questions, is really just to increase the size of this accessory, uh, building, which was never constructed from thirty-two-hundred square feet to forty-eight-hundred square feet.
Okay, thank you. Vina, do you have any?
I actually don't have.
Talking about?
I don't have any questions. Uh, in fact, the first time, um, I saw this application, I, I just assumed it would be a minor site plan application. But then, when I went and checked the definition, uh, our minor site plan application, uh, definition says that you can only have thousand square feet of building space. It exceeded slightly. The, uh, addition of the six hundred square feet does not trigger in any variances. In fact, it eliminates one of the variants, because when the applicant was in front of the planning board in the beginning of twenty-nineteen, the EDO one ordinance required a different setback. Later on, in twenty-twenty, mm, twenty-nineteen, again, I revised the EDO, uh, ordinance, the council approved it, wherein I made the side yard setback to be twenty-five, which was granted. So now the accessory building complies with the new, uh, side yard setback as well. So, uh, other than that, I don't have any comments. There are no variances involved, it does not change, uh, the overall operation of the site. Nicole, all yours.
Okay, thank you. Nicole, did you have anything?
Uh, no, there was only one comment I had, and that was the use of RAP. And, um, they're going to provide the guidance or, or the certification that it meets NJDEP requirements, and that was it. I, I actually had the opportunity to visit the site, and it's, uh, neat and orderly in the interior of the, um, the manufacturing of the signage, so it, it, it is a nice operation. And I think this would be a good, um, accessory or a good, um, you know, improvement to the site so that they could store the materials indoor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the board, do you have any questions, or?
I have a comment.
I'd just like to say, oh, I'm sorry.
Ed?
I'd just like to say I appreciate your history of the, uh, site. It's sad to say I remember the stable.
I remember Wayne, too. He was a interesting fellow, but I, I, I do miss him. And he, he offered us a lot of guidance when we first moved in, so.
Yeah, we used to ride horseback in the, in the. Yes, Mr. Mammakis?
So as the economic development officer, I've seen all the challenges they've been through out there as a business in town. And I'm for the application, and for the reason being is, we want to see businesses expand. I've been on the site, I've seen their product, you know, it's, it's top quality product that they put out of that building. And seeing the, and I've been there, and they've, they've expressed their concerns of their product being outside and needing a place to build it, so I'm for the pro- I'm for it.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Yes, Mr. Ring?
And it goes back to the, uh, the use of the accessory structure. So I understand now the accessory structure will be used to fabricate and store signs.
Not necessarily, it's mostly used for storing signs and staging the signs.
Because they tie back to the definitions. And under accessory structure, the, an accessory structure should be incidental to the use of the primary structure. So if it's business-related, and it co-intermingles with the business itself, that structure, then it's not incidental. And then it would not be an accessory structure. So by definition, I'm just curious if you can bring. So, in my view, I don't believe that would fall under accessory structure.
Well, yeah, if I can respond to that. The common definition, I think, of an accessory structure, and I, I guess I can give the best example, would be a shed. And shed is an accessory structure on a residential property. Uh, that shed is used for storage, could be used to store your lawnmower, anything incidental to that business. Uh, obviously, in this situation, they, they have an existing ten-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot facility. Uh, and they're going to, obviously, uh, they do their manufacturing in there, they have their offices in there. So this, this pole barn, this, uh, which is, you know, which is an accessory structure, is incidental clearly to that business for the purpose of storage.
That's correct, but not for fabrication?
Well, I guess it's a question of what you consider fabrication. It's really, uh, I, if you're.
I'd not, not to rebut you, if it's anything relative to sales for that business operation, then it's not incidental to the principal structure.
Okay.
No, but I think, I think, uh, from what I remember, the, the additional space is to use also to dry the signs. And they can't do that outs- outdoors, so that's why it's incidental to the primary use.
Right.
Mind if I, um, a comment? So if you've been in the facility, they make signage the size of billboards. So, and he can explain actually what the product is. And the size of the billboards don't fit inside the building. Once they print them, they're just massive. So from my perspective, and you can elaborate on how, when you get a billboard into that accessory structure or building your building, you need to possibly frame it or something like that, what happens in that building? So from my perspective, I see the signage that they make is, is rather large, it is big. Just my two cents.
This application was initially approved by this board back in twenty-nineteen with, and listen, we can call it an accessory structure, you want to call it another principal structure, I don't think it really matters at this point, because it was approved. So the only thing we're seeking tonight, uh, is really just an expansion of that building.
Okay. And actually, even if, to add on to Larry's point, even if we consider it as a secondary principal structure, it doesn't trigger, uh, a use variance. It does not exceed the floor area. The township's ordinance, especially in the EDO zone, allows you to have, uh, multiple structures, so, um.
That's the talking point, Vina. I think that it should be redefined as what this structure is called, and not called an accessory structure, because I don't believe there's any way to interpret the definition, to view it as this structure will be incidental to the principal structure. It should be just an additional structure on the property.
But if the applicant is testifying that they are using the structure to dry their signs and to, uh, store their signs, I wouldn't agree that, uh, it's not incidental to the principal use.
And I would also say that I don't thi- I think there's electric to put on some lights in there, but I don't think you have HVAC, I don't think you have plumbing, I don't think so. So as a principal building, I don't think it really fits it because of the utilities to the building.
Right, no restrooms, nothing.
Madam Chair, if I could just add, I think that, that really comes down to where my definition, where I would lay on it, is, I, I understand, Mr. Rena, your, your point, because it is really part of their, um, continued operations. However, if you look at the actual structure itself, I don't think it will fall, I don't think the structure itself could qualify as necessarily a principal. Right. Right, right. So I think, um, you know, keeping it at this point labeled or, or considered as an accessory structure is not improper, uh, though I absolutely understand your position, and if it did have, if the building itself was more, um, uh, generally, uh, equipped to handle bathrooms, HVAC, all that kind of stuff, I may, uh, further say that we'd probably land on the other wa- other side and say that we should probably consider it two principal structures, but since it doesn't, I think I would follow the other line, but it's real close, real close to that line.
I, I believe when the applicant came in front of the board the first time, there was a pre-application meeting, if you remember, uh, Nicole, and that was the first thing that we had, as the zoning officer, Nicole, myself, are you going to have restrooms there, or, you know, is there any plumbing? And the applicant had made it clear that, no, we need storage space, and that's why we need this building. So, um, I, I, I think that was the basis of us calling it an accessory structure in the first time, too.
Okay, now that we've had that clarification. All right, anybody else from the board before I open to the public? Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this application?
And, uh, I think just to be clear, th- this is being open for public questions of these witnesses, and since it's just all done together, this is also general comment. So if there's any general comments of the application, testimony, or questions of these witnesses, we're doing it all at once. Uh, uh, Madam Chair, I think that makes sense, given the brevity of the application.
If you want to just come up and say hello, that's fine.
Ask me about the application.
Yes. You have to come up, please, and just give your name.
I'm, I just arrived.
Can you give your name, please?
Ramadan, the whole bit.
Can you please give your name?
Yes, Paulita Abu Ali. I'm here about the, the applicant, uh, Brightpoint Housing LLC.
Oh, that's, that's been adjourned. I, I apologize, that, yes, that, that's been, we don't have a new date yet, but new notice will be given for that application. Um, uh, I think it was testified, it might not be until, the next meeting is, is booked up, so it might not be until June or July, but new notice will be provided, that has been carried.
It won't be Ramadan. All right, thank you.
Okay.
You're, you're also reviewing the application for the, for the golf course and stuff like that?
No.
That's not on this evening.
It's not on this evening. I think I'm going to leave.
Nicole? Thank you. There we have somebody else.
Good evening, uh, my name is Kathleen Leo, and I'm here tonight, uh, concerning the Medina Corporation, which is on Morristown Road, a big, huge project.
Well, this, this is only about this application. Well, this, this is only about this application right now. This, there will be a.
But I thought you said you could just come.
Well, comments about this application.
This application.
I'm sorry.
That's what I thought.
Yes, no, no, I'm sorry. There'll be a portion later to discuss any other.
Yeah, you can come up and talk about whatever. Okay, so we'll ask for a, is there a resolution regarding this application?
Not yet, we just have to have the vote to approve, yes. The, this will be a very quick summary, the applicant, this vote for approval will be granting the amended preliminary and final site plan application. No additional variances of being requested, or being granted, or design waivers at this time, and the only condition of approval that was discussed is compliance with the township professionals' report with regard to providing the certification with regard to the roadway.
Okay, do I have a motion regarding this res, this application?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. DePalma, please.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. Zepalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Renna?
No.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
If you could bring the horses back, I'd be happy. Okay, so, nothing else except general comments?
Just general public comment.
Okay, now we have general public comment, if there's anyone that wants to just come up and.
Has the 66-2020 application been heard? I, I mean, I don't know if I missed something on it, because I received a letter about the Medina Corporation on Morristown Road.
The, the application has been adjourned, so it will not be heard tonight. We still don't know, we don't have a date. However, when it is scheduled, whether it's this board or the zoning board, you will be notified again.
Where am I going to find information about this massive project? Because my property's right next door to it, and this is the first I heard that this big, huge complex.
You should receive, you should receive a similar notice when it is scheduled. All the application material is available in the planning office for inspection. All the application material is also available on the planning department's webpage. So if you go to the township's website and planning department webpage, every application material, not just this application, but every other application, all the information is posted 10 days prior to the meeting.
Do we, don't we post it, don't we have it in the library anymore? We used to have all the applications and information in the library.
I don't believe so. It's in the planning office, it's on the township's website, because now that the building is open, anybody can come and inspect the plans and all the material in the office.
And that will, it will be all explained what this big project is? Because this is the very first I'm hearing about this.
Well, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of dialogue.
There will be a lot of information shared at the public hearing, so the notice really says that if you have questions concerned, you should come back to a similar public hearing in which the applicant presents the plans, you get to watch the presentation, post that, the professionals ask questions. Once the professionals are done asking questions, the attorney will open it up to the public, where each one of you get a chance to speak.
And will I be notified of that?
Yes, you will be.
You'll get a notice if you're within.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thanks, good to see you.
Good to see you, great.
Okay, anybody else from the public that wishes to come up and talk to us? Okay, does the board have anything else they want to bring up? Okay, I would just strongly suggest that we consider putting, especially these bigger applications, in the library, because the library's open on weekends and evenings. There's still a lot of people that don't have access to computers.
Sure, will do.
I would, you know, consider the ones that, you know, affect a lot of people, and. Okay, there's no other comments or questions, then we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Mr. DePalma? Second.
We have second? Mr. Pink? Roll call, please.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Mimakis?
Yes.
Mr. Zepalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Renna?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Was she trying to? I don't know. She's just tapping back. Okay. Anybody else?
[inaudible].
Okay. Anybody else from the public that wishes to come up and talk to us? Okay, does the board have anything else they want to bring up? Okay, I would just strongly suggest that we consider putting, especially these bigger applications, in the library, because the library's open on weekends and evenings. There's still a lot of people that don't have access to computers.
Sure, will do.
I would, you know, consider the ones that, you know, affect a lot of people, and. Okay, there's no other comments or questions, then we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Mr. DePalma?
Second.[1765.51]